Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of May 19th, 2020. I'd like to ask Deanne Davis to give the invocation and then I will do the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Lord, we ask for your presence with us tonight during these difficult times for our city and our world. We thank you for watching over our city officials and workers as they continue to provide the services we need and to protect our citizens. We ask your blessing on the volunteers on our boards and commissions as they make difficult decisions and selflessly give their time in service to our community. Grant us peace, wisdom, and perseverance. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I have a roll call, Deanne?
Becker?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Vitaleo?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Blakeman?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Y'all received the meeting minutes for the May 5th meeting. Is there any comments, questions on those? Here now and they'll stand as submitted. I have a couple of things that I need to read this evening. First is a very unfortunate one. It says, Dear Mr. Lance Willard in Columbia City Council, it is with great regret that I must resign my position from the Columbia City Planning Commission because of health reasons at the present time. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time serving the city of Columbia and its citizens, and I have felt that over the years, the relationship between the planning and council has been strong and will continue to. My request is that if possible, that my successor be a woman of strong character to finish out my term. And as such, I would like to recommend Attorney Amanda Banner. Thank you and God bless Donna Becker. So Donna, I would just like to say, I've been thinking about this for the past week or so and how you and I met. And our first meeting together was at the Planning Commission. And I remember it being a really tough one. And I just want to personally thank you for the years that we've worked together and how far and open you were with working with me. And I think everything you've done has been with nothing but sincere intentions for the betterment of our community. And the community is thankful for you. With that, I wrote a proclamation. And so whereas Donna Becker has served faithfully as a City Planning Commission member for the past 14 years from May 9th, 2006 through May 12th, 2020.
I don't know.
And whereas for a portion of this time of service, she served as a chairperson for the Planning Commission. And whereas she has notably demonstrated dedication of purpose for our city as she worked for the betterment of Columbia's development. And whereas a Planning Commission member has willingly faced the challenges of a growing city and business environment to ensure that each entity complement the other. And whereas she is honored by, was honored by the Columbia Area Chamber of Commerce in 2016 with a Lifetime of Service Award for her many years of volunteer service to organizations such as the American Legion, the Columbia School Board, the Columbia Women's Club, and the Restoration and Beautification Committee. And whereas the citizens of the community are pleased to join in expressing appreciation for Donna for her many years of dedicated service to our city. And now therefore I, Brian Blakeman, Mayor of the City of Columbia, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim today, May 19th, 2020, to be Donna Becker Day. And extend my personal thanks and also those of the City Council and city officials to honor her for her many selfless years of service for the betterment of our community. And I would like to further express our friendship, good wishes, and prayers for good health dated this day, 19th of May, 2020. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, everyone. Bless you, always.
So is there any, anything that any council members would like to say right now?
I would, Brian. I had the honor of presenting the Lifetime of Service Award to Donna at the Chamber banquet. And just to summarize a little bit of the presentation that night, Donna served on the Planning Commission during a time of considerable growth in the city. She had to make a lot of difficult decisions over the years because of those responsibilities. But I always knew Donna to communicate those decisions with grace and dignity, which is something that I really appreciated. In the words of her nominators, she contributed to the betterment of Columbia and its citizens and has dedicated her life to the Columbia area. She led by example and showed us what a lifetime of service really is. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, guys.
Always respected you. Not only the Planning Commission, but the way that you've worked with R and B and some of the other things that you've done. I've just marvelled at your energies and your abilities. Want to know.
Thanks.
I spent five years working with you on the Planning Commission. And of course, we've done a lot of work together out at the Legion and other places. But we've always enjoyed working with you and I hope we continue to have opportunities to do so in the future.
Thanks, Steph.
I would just like to add that Donna took her role very seriously. And many, many days and nights, she and I talked on the phone at great length about issues that we were trying to discuss and plan for the future. And she was always very serious and wanted to make sure that it was the best thing for the community. And I really appreciate the advice and direction she gave me and all the things she's done for the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Rec.
Um, I'd just like to add, Donna and I also met under unusual circumstances, quite a discussion we had at that City Council meeting. And though I think she probably thought I was a complete nut at the beginning of that. We talked for a while and you know, I don't think we, either of us managed to convince each other much, but the one thing that I will say and that I thought was really amazing was, and that wasn't amazing because I know Donna's a lady of great class, but how respectful we were both able to be and how she tried to teach me, and she did teach me some things that night and other conversations since then. And how much I appreciate the kind of guidance you've given me as I've come through this process of joining council. We went from being adversaries, I think is what I'm looking forward to. Hopefully not friends maybe, but certainly associates and and people who really respect each other. And I think we proved that night too, that something we've, a lot of people have forgotten in this world, not necessarily here, but around, is that you can disagree with somebody and still respect them. That's, that is something that's lost. Donna, I really appreciate that and I wish we had more time to work together because I think, I think I have a lot to learn from you.
Donna and I just want to say thanks. We've worked together a very short time on the Plan Commission, but thank you.
Thanks. And I want to say a special thank you to Lance Willard for just being the person he is.
Well, thank you, Donna. You you've been a real mentor to me and I really appreciate all the help and guidance that you've provided us. And I'm just really glad that you, you know, re-upped and stayed on there. You had an opportunity to step down a few years ago, but I remember trying to convince you to stick on because we needed your experience. So we really appreciate it and the friendship and guidance has been amazing. And you're just, you're just a wonderful person and that I enjoyed working with you at the R and B and the Women's Club too. So we'll definitely see each other around.
That we will. Thanks, everyone.
Is there a council member that would like to make a motion to honor Donna's request for her replacement to be Amanda Banner?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Yes. I just wanted to say that there is a precedent for anybody vacating a position to request their replacement be seated for the duration of their term. And with all of Donna's done for this community, I see no reason whatsoever that we shouldn't honor that and with no questions asked.
I'm sure Donna will have thought into it and I couldn't think of a better person to try and fill her shoes. It's going to be a tough road for Amanda to try and fill her shoes.
Yeah, I agree with that as well. The one thing that I think we ought to let the public know is that there is no specific procedure in the charter that requires us to advertise the position or do anything else. We are perfectly within the charter's guidelines to make this appointment.
If I may, I would just like to add one thing. I gave it a lot of thought and thought to myself. It was really a good. I guess a good thing for me to think of that. You know, Amanda, Amanda knows you. And I just thought it would be an easy transition. And she's a very bright young lady. And I just thought she would be an exceptional person to be on our zoning, planning commission. And I keep saying zoning. They're gonna think I belong there. Anyway, but thank you, guys.
Deanne, can I have a roll call? No, not roll call. Can I, can I just call, call the roll?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Vitaleo?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
There you go, Donna.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. And I'm gonna bow out of here.
Okay. As, as such, the next item on the agenda is the Planning Commission meeting minutes from the last meeting last week. Does anyone on council have any questions about what took place? I don't, I'm not sure if everyone is familiar. I know I hadn't seen anything in the, from the press yet, but.
Not tomorrow.
Okay, Mr. Hippley decided on his own accord to withdraw and retract his request for Hippley Garden to be a semi quasi, like quasi-public space. And as such, ended the discussion of it. There was no formal vote by the Planning Commission. So if he would choose to at a later date resubmit, he could, but in light of everything that's going on with the virus and social distancing and having to clean himself, he decided that he did not want to do anything to keep it, to make it public at all. And so six months from now, a year from now, we may be having a different discussion, but for, for the near term, there, there will be no additional action and the neighbors that were concerned about it being public can sleep easy knowing that it's not. So I just want to make sure that got out there and that you guys were all aware of it. Next up, we have Jacob Savick, Columbia Street Fair Manager, to discuss the 2020 Columbia Street Fair and Parade.
Thank you, Brian, Council, Lance. So we all know everything that's going on. And with keeping close tabs on the things that I'm responsible for with the fair and other fairs. And seeing that we're trending in the direction of what looks like being able to have the fair without any real hiccups. I thought it was time to put the request in to hold the fair and get council blessing at this time for it. And in there in the third paragraph, I discussed that, you know, I do understand and Legion understands that there are things that we are still unaware of that the governor may say or order that could prevent that. And it obviously would be addressed at that time. But to be able to get moving with the planning and getting contracts and that. I put forth the request and everything in there is the same, except I didn't forget to change a couple of dates on the parking lot shuttle for the, in the parking lots in the park. Those dates are wrong. But this would be the 134th. The dates would be September 10, 11, 12, with setup being on September 9th. On page two of the request, it talks about closures, which are the same as last year's. The city lot next to AAA, Main Street, South Union for tent setup, Pittsburgh Street between Main Street and the alley for major rides for Kissel. And then 5:30 for the rest of the street at that time to, one, allow businesses to close, people to finish eating and not be disturbed, and then be able to start setting up at 6:00. I did ask, and I mentioned to Lance last year, and I added it about if we can do something with traffic control on Wednesday to reroute truck traffic off of Main Street towards Railroad Street down Vine or Elm Street or something, because there was a lot of traffic, which is dangerous because not only the city workers are putting, electricians are putting stuff out, the city park departments putting out benches. You've got trash cans going out with heavy traffic, heavy semis and those going down there after 12 o'clock, it becomes a hazard to them. But the public in general, and then they're going on roads that they don't usually go on, that probably aren't supporting those loads very well. With that, I will turn it over.
Yeah, I, I do think that the record, I mean, I know you submitted the letter, but because we're doing this kind of virtual, I think that paragraph should probably be read for everyone else listening. It says, "The American Legion," and I understand that there are other circumstances that could affect our ability to hold the street fair. What we are after is that assuming the governor has lifted gathering restrictions that the city of Columbia is in agreement with the American Legion to hold the annual Columbia Street Fair. I also understand that the city of Columbia can review this and reverse their decision if circumstances are not favoring having the fair. Thank you. I just want to make sure everyone knows what, in writing, what you're requesting.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of the American Legion, including the waiver of the $25 fare fee and also the waiver of the requirements for licenses for food trucks, which Jacob left out of it, but I think that's appropriate to do.
Second that.
Any comment?
Jake, how long do you think you can wait? If you had to pull the plug because of the contracts that you're, have sent out, and what feedback have you gotten from those folks?
The majority of our vendors, they just want to work. I mean, like anybody else. They understand that we're, the time that we're in and the way things shift quickly right now. They're adaptable. The, I had a meeting last night with the trustees at the Legion. So they know, they know what's going on. If we had to pull the plug, I mean, I think we'll know there's, there's three events that I'm, I'm keeping a close eye on. It's the Ohio State Fair, the Columbia County Fair, and the Canfield Fair. If those fairs go, I don't see that there would be a reason why we shouldn't be able to hold ours. But if those events start getting canceled, starting with the Ohio State Fair, then I'm going to start wondering and really looking and doing some more digging to find out where we're headed into August and the beginning of September, because each of those fairs falls at a different time. Ohio State is July, August, the county fair is in all of August, and Canfield falls completely in September. So I would hope to know definitively by the end of the month with the, or pretty, say 70% sure by the end of the month, beginning in June. So I believe the governor is supposed to put out a, kind of a blanket statement order for gatherings for a while, from what I've heard. If not by July, I would imagine we would know. And if you, whatever the city would like to know or have me back for another meeting, that is completely understandable. So to talk about this further if we need to.
I think those are three pretty good objectives to watch to give you some guidance. I for one would like to see you keep the council and all of those needed to be informed. So welcome back anytime and keep us in the loop.
I, I do think that it's very wise to plan as if you're proceeding right now. I mean, I think we need to get back to some semblance of normal life. And I, I think that, I mean, as long as we're physically allowed and able, there's no reason for people to not make up their own mind whether they want to attend it. But we, I don't, if we're allowed to do it, I don't think we should tell people they can't. Any other comments?
I'd like to add is, and I'm not sure who else listened to the governor today, but the stay-at-home order is pretty much lifted. The order doesn't change the mass gathering restrictions, which remains at 10. So he has not changed that yet. But as far as the stay-at-home, we're now basically saying, stay, well, let's see. Ohio is protecting Ohio's urgent health advisory. So we're kind of moving in that direction, but he hasn't lifted that as of yet.
Couldn't, couldn't this motion be attached to the state health department's orders? I mean, so long as we're allowed to, I mean, that, that could be a part of it. If we're not allowed, clearly we can't do it.
Right, right now we couldn't, but I think you could certainly pass it with the provision that it is attached to that, to the state health department's orders. That makes sense.
Well, his letter openly states that we can rescind our approval at any time based on what's happening.
True.
So I'm, I'm not really sure that we have, I mean, we can't, doesn't make any difference, but I'm not sure we have to tie it to that. We have the, council has the ability to, to pull that plug at any time.
Yeah, my, my only concern with not attaching that would be just kind of thumb in our nose that if there's something out there saying that we can't, can't do it today. And we say, yeah, you can do it today. We could change our mind, but you could do it today. I, I think we should say, you could do it today so long and planned, so long as the order been lifted. And then, then you're complying with both. You're, you're giving the American Legion what they're looking for with our guidance and you're not telling the state that we're, we're going to vote to tell somebody they can do something you've told us not to.
We, do we? When I, when I made the motion, I was making the motion based on Jacob's letter, which basically said that those circumstances could occur. I'd be happy to modify the, my motion to include that explicitly, that it depends on the lifting of the governor's orders on the gatherings and so on, which I guess would have to be then seconded again.
I'll second it again.
We have a roll call on that.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Vitaleo?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Well, maybe that'll help quiet some rumors, Jake.
Right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Now we're going to move into manager's report.
Okay, thank you. So each week we talk about starting off the meeting with Zoom. We had one last night at the park board meeting. I would recommend that we, you know, continue to monitor the governor's orders on the, on the, on the gatherings of 10 or more and make that you know, kind of our guidance moving forward, whether we're going to continue with Zoom or we're going to continue with this. Last night, we did have a park board meeting. We talked a lot about the Fourth of July. We talked a lot about the potential opening of the pool. And I see Ron and Terry are here. If you have any questions about that specifically, we can get into that. We can just do it at the end of my manager's report, but we did, we did plan to have another meeting on June 1st, which is a night before the council meeting, which is June 2nd. And by then we'll have all the details worked out on, on how we're going to move forward with opening the pool. They did vote to open the pool sometime in mid-June. And it's our job, Terry and my, and Ron's job to work together to make sure that we're obeying all the rules set down by the governor and also the recommendations by CDC. We had a lot of input last night on it and I believe it was at least a two-hour meeting. So we've got a lot of heads working together, thinking about it, and Terry and his, his staff are, are prepared to do it and we're excited about that. You know, I'm, I'm proud that we stayed steady on this and didn't make a knee-jerk reaction decision at the beginning of the year and then, or beginning of all this COVID-19. And I'm also excited that we didn't, you know, lay all the rules out within 16 business hours of them releasing it. So we have a week that we're working on it and then we'll get back to that June meeting. And also Dan Becker will, will be, he's the liaison for the park and, and the council and he'll, he'll be at the pool meeting also. We do watch the governor every day and making those adjustments, like everybody else said, it's, it's a, it's a day-by-day thing. And he did, he did telegraph to us a little bit about the fairs and events, and I think we're going to know more about that in the next week. We are going to keep City Hall and drive up, the drive-up window closed until June 1st. And then, and then look for anything else from the governor, but we'll probably start opening back up in June. We did turn in two applications for CDBG specifically for paving. And tomorrow morning, we're going to be presenting that to the board via Zoom. The FEMA project still continues. We're working on the engineering and are out in the area surveying also. The ODOT Phase 1 project, we talked a lot about that last night. It's going really well. They're flying through it. They're doing the west end of the gutter right now. So if you split up the gutter in the east and west. So if you split up the, the gutter in the east and west around where the gazebo is, they're doing the west side of that and it's going really well. We had a, we, we saw a failure occurring by the, by the edge of the road in, in the, the current gutter that we were tearing out. And we were able to shift on the fly with ODOT and present to them a, a better product than what was originally engineered. The problem is, is it was quite costly, nearly $25 a foot. And we were, we've been in constant contact with R and B. And they met last Tuesday and they, I got a call from Pat Tingle, who said that the R and B is donating the money to, for those improvements above and beyond the rest of the project. So we're really excited about that. We really thank them for that because we're going to, this, this type of gutter is really going to set the tone for the rest of the park. And, and we wanted to make sure that it's, it's, it's going to be sturdy and last for years to come. I continue to work closely with the chamber. We had a meeting yesterday at 2:00 with some of the members. And then we also talked about the Fourth of July, which last night, we talked about the Fourth of July a lot. And the chamber has, is, is basically they've postponed it. And it will not occur on July 4th and with a late, later date to be determined. And we appreciate walking through that with the park board, who had a lot of input on that too. They are doing the block parties. Not sure if you've heard the music in the afternoons. It's kind of neat. There's a few. There's been a few around in my neighborhood and it was, it was a fun, fun night. Terry's staff for the, the park have been really helping on the ODOT project and the R and B projects. So we really thank them and thank the street department and Jesse Wilson for, for being out there overseeing that ODOT project. And it's, it's going well because of them and we do appreciate it. Two weeks into the project, you know, in, in normal time, it could have went off in a bad way with, with, you know, maybe going over budget, but we were able to get it back on and, and have a nicer project. We are getting ready to mow for the street department. We did fill a lot of potholes and we're sweeping streets. Water department, they're working on some taps, hydrants and have a couple of projects going on right now. One out at the park and one out at Old Saybrook, I believe. Wastewater, they're doing their DRRQ testing, which is a, a national test that they need to do every year. They were having a computer issue. I think it's still existing. They may have to get a new computer. Park staff did a great job getting ready for the Memorial Day. Park and cemetery is looking really nice. And in these difficult times, we're, we're trying to stretch the money as long as, as, as far as we can. And we've, we've kind of come up with a couple innovative ideas to, to stretch that money and, and stretch our manpower. So we're, we're working through that process. And we do appreciate everybody brainstorming on that. We did attend a meeting with Terra Design Project for the, the R and B project. And if you notice, the R and B project, they're planting trees right now. And that project will continue over the summer. So the last we spoke, we, we talked about a, a pretty significant project for the electric department. There is a potential failure out there. So we, we went out and, and did it quickly. We really appreciate the, the departments for working. And we also had an engineer help us on this. We identified a problem out in the system and have isolated it down to one unit and that's the transformer. And that's on the south sub. And we are, I, I'm asking you to pass emergency legislation tonight to get that project going. Because right now we, we love redundancy in utilities and we don't have much redundancy right now. As I said at the last meeting, we, we're blessed that the previous administrations had thought about it and made the north sub, and it was costly, able to handle everything in the city. So we had redundancy at the north, north sub. And in fact, that's what we're doing today. We've also had, we've, we have had a, a couple of electric glitches in the past couple of weeks. You've probably seen those and those were, one of them was a major, basically it was explosion of some hardware that was used to monitor our incoming line. It was owned by Ohio Edison, but we worked very hard through the night to get that set up. So we really appreciate the, the crews for doing that. And, and then today there was a, a pretty wide outage that happened in Edison too. So we do ask you to pass that and then we're going to get the redundant aspect out as soon as we can, once we pass the contract. And you know, it's a key part of, of that project. Because if, 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 if anything failed on the north end, we wouldn't have any, any backup. So this, this part of the project has redundancy built into it. And with that, I'll open it up to Ron and Terry to see if they had anything to add about the park in, in, in the various projects and moving forward.
Lance, this is Ron Del Wyler. Let me make a couple of comments first and then I'll open up to questions from council. As Lance said, we had a very lengthy meeting last night and we discussed a, a number of projects in the park that are going to be very, very important to this community. I, I will say this, there'll be an article in the Morning Journal tomorrow morning, a series of articles that Scott's putting together for us. It's going to explain this very nicely of what we talked about and the decisions we made and why we made them. Let me go through a list real quick. So it'll give you a heads up with some of the decisions we made. Understand as I go through this, and I said the same thing last night. Park Board is an arm of council. We're doing our job. It's putting the information together, making preliminary discussions and decisions. And when we're done with our information gathering, I, we're going to come back to council for their input on finalizing these decisions that we made. So keep that in mind. Last night, Columbia Youth Baseball came before Park Board and outlined how they want to begin their season for the young baseball teams in the park. How they're going to incorporate social distancing, a, a player waivers, disinfectant, et cetera. The Park Board approved for them to go ahead with youth baseball in the park this summer. And they're going to come back with their guidelines for us. And Lance already talked on the chamber and their decision on Fourth of July. You'll find as I go on that our park board, unlike some of the other municipalities around us, East Palestine, Lisbon, Salem, where they jumped in at the beginning and canceled many events. We decided to take an approach that we would monitor the situation, listen to the guidelines that the governor put forward and make those decisions as we went along. And the chamber has really decided to put off the Fourth of July. There's many discussions how to incorporate that back in at a later date. But again, they're taking the same approach, monitor the situation and make those decisions as we go, depending on what the governor puts out. Football coach was with us last night. And his concern is when he can get back into the weight room in the park. Since then, I've got some new information even since that meeting. But the superintendent has approved that they'll reopen the weight room for the school kids on May 26th. They've already contacted the health department. And the health department is giving them guidelines, what they need to do to disinfect that facility. And then it has to be inspected by the Board of Health. And then the school kids will be allowed to go back into the weight room in the park. Lance covered the ODOT project. Again, let me say, we're tickled to death with the way that program is going. Lance covered that nicely. And it's going to be truly a tremendous addition to the park when they're finished. Pavilions came up last night to give you a heads up there. Very difficult to govern the 10 person rule and social distancing with pavilions our size. So the decision was made by Park Board that the pavilions are going to be closed until further notice. It's putting Terry in quite a spot to try to deal with these people that have had these reservations for a year. But we felt it was best to again, not make a decision to close them for the whole year, but to monitor the situation. And we're going on a two week type of notice. We're going to sit down and meet and analyze situation every two weeks and decide at that time how to go forward. But as of right now, the pavilions are closed and it looks like they will be for at least another two weeks. Obviously, the biggest discussion last night was on the swimming pool. Lengthy discussion on many, many areas. But it was decided to go forward with the opening of the swimming pool. Terry's informed us that it's going to take at least three weeks to get it up and running. So we won't be opening by that Memorial Day date. We're looking at mid-June at least to open the pool. Many things were discussed and there's going to be many changes for us to enforce these rules. All the way from pool passes to hours to lifeguards. Terry has put his staff together, obviously with everything that's gone on, some of those individuals have gotten new jobs. So we have to deal with that. The park board is going to get together at the end of next week. And with Lance's help, I come up with a set of guidelines of what we need to do to put the pool back into operation for this year. Understand, it changes every day. And so we've taken the approach, instead of shutting the door and publicizing that we're going to have no pool this year, to sit and analyze it as an ongoing situation. We understand it's going to be tough. I mean, a pool our size and to have three communities around us in Salem, Lisbon, and East Palestine that have closed their pool for the year. I know you all have been there on a hot summer day and the crowds that we have. It's going to be very difficult for us to enforce the guidelines that we are setting forward. Part of this whole plan is that we, whether it's council, park board, police, we have the right to pull the plug at any time if we feel that we can't get people to follow the rules and if anybody's safety is involved. But the major issue here is we will be opening the pool towards mid-June, end of June for this year.
Quick, quick comment. Yesterday, that I saw going around online, a couple of people like reached out to me and made a couple of suggestions for whatever they're worth, that maybe do like a wristband type thing that is only for like certain amount of hours. So that more people can have the opportunity to come through. So rather than going in and sitting there for eight hours, 10 hours, is make it like a three hour thing or a four hour thing. But that, that way have like a morning and an afternoon session, which would like get you double potential, the number of people to come through as, as an idea. And then also with the wristband type system, only give out wristbands to people in our community, at least at the beginning, until we can see how, how it's filling up with our own residents before we, we have more coming in from outside.
Right, those are the things that we're going to talk about next week. The wristband is a new one to me. Well said. The business about opening it to our community was discussed in length last night. So that's going to be discussed also. If anybody, council, anybody has any suggestions, please get those to us. We're shooting for next Thursday to try to get everybody together to go over them. A big thank you to Lance. I mean, Lance is the one that's gone through the CDC regulations and guidelines and kept us on the straight and narrow. I think you'll understand that we've taken the approach that we're going to actually stay on top of this, monitor it every two weeks and make decisions as we go along. And we feel that that'll work very well. So if anybody from council has a problem with that, please let us know now, so we can go forward. One last item that we discussed last night was the concerts in the park. As you know, we have six concerts in the park, two each month, June, July, and August. We moved last night to cancel the two concerts in June. Today, after our meeting, we did receive a phone call from the Boardman, a youth choir that is in July. And they canceled their performance just because of the age of their kids that are in the choir, et cetera. So, and also the house band, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. They contacted us today and said that they like coming to Columbia so well that they'll just be flexible and fill in wherever we can use them throughout the season. So that's another one that we're monitoring. Every two weeks, we're going to go by guidelines from the governor and make a decision what we're going to do with concerts in the park. Any questions? Our plan is to put a lot of these guidelines for all the projects together. And then we will be, Terry, Lance and I will be at the next council meeting, June, or June 2nd. And at that time, a council's blessing, instructions, we'll go from there. If anybody has any suggestions for us on any of these topics, please let us know as soon as possible. Any questions?
Ron, I don't have a question, more a comment of how much I appreciate what the park board has been doing in not jumping the gun and not making rash decisions. I know it's not easy for anybody. Any members of the board, Terry's crew especially to have to, I mean, you guys are pivoting every other day, I think, to, to make this all work. So I really appreciate the fact that we're trying to, trying to get some kind of a normal, you know, normal summer for our, our residents, because a lot of others haven't really made that their main priority. So I do appreciate how hard you guys are working and, you know, I'm sure I've got some ideas I'll shoot over. I'll get them to you through Lance or whatever. But I do just want to say how much I appreciate what you guys are doing out there.
Thank you, thank you. Understand too, and I'm sure you understand this. The decisions we're making and some of the guidelines we're coming up with, we're not going to be able to make everybody happy. There's going to be people that, some people that agree with what we've done and the decisions we've made. And there's going to be those that are very upset. I've received some phone calls already that it, it's just, it's going to be, especially when the article comes out in the paper tomorrow. It's hard to keep everybody happy, but we're trying to do the best we can. And I think we'll come out of this right. I really do.
Well, I mean, in, in the rule that we all have, you're never going to make everyone happy. We need to do, do what we can with the information that we're given and don't look back.
I'm just reiterating that point for Scott's benefit. I'm just reiterating that point for Scott's benefit.
I have, I have heard from people in, in East Palestine and Salem and places like that, saying that, you know, their, their, their government has just dumped everything for the season. And they were praising the Park Board for taking the, the approach that we're just going to wait and see what happens. We might be able to salvage some of this summer. And I think that's, that's kudos all the way around, guys. Nice job.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I wanted to compliment Terry and his, his staff. I mean, he, you know, the reality is that whatever guidelines we set, him and, him and his staff are going to have to, you know, deploy them and police them. And they, they all agreed, you know, he, he met with them on Sunday and they, they're up for the task. So I said this last night, I mean, I, I get stressed out on a normal year at the pool with all the rules and regulations. This year I can't, I'm not going close to that, you know?
Yeah. Have anything else, Lance?
No, that's it, Brian.
All right. Well, you received the, the bid results for the South Substation Transformer Repair Project that we'll be voting on. Looked to me like we only ended up having one bidder, right?
Yeah.
That makes it a little easier.
Yeah. Yeah. And in this case, we were, we were very excited that they, they put a bid in. And, and the truth of the matter is sometimes you don't get a bid, you know, and you have to rebid it. So we were blessed to have it. And plus it's a company we've been working with for many years. So.
Good. And I want to just let council and the city know that whenever the governor's orders went in, I stopped holding mayor's court. Haven't really had, seen, seen a, a need to over the last two months. But as of our next meeting, starting June 2nd, we'll be holding court again at city hall. So that, that will be back to normal. So with that, you all received the bill list from, for today, from May 19th. Any comments on it? Hearing none, we'll move on. There is no old business. But under new business, we have one, due to the length of the ordinance, can I have a motion to read it by title only and as an emergency?
Sir, move.
Back end.
Can I have a roll call?
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-0-3038, emergency. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Solomon Corporation, 103 West Main Street, PO Box 245, Solomon KS 67480, for the South Substation 15 MVA Power Transformer Repair Project for the City of Columbia Electric Department.
Second.
Any comments?
Yeah, I noticed there were some incidental expenses that they said would be like $5,000 to $8,000. When we're spending that kind of money, maybe we should just go ahead and spend incidentals too. We're going to have virtually a new piece of equipment. Should we put some of the old test equipment or the old honoring equipment on it?
Yeah. So they are going to give us a, they're basically going to take it apart and diagnose this, this unit once they get it. And they will tell us what they, you know, give us like a smorgasbord of what we can do to that. And we, as you saw in your S, or in your Exhibit A, it talks about the, you know, brand new unit. And, and this is, you know, this, we're going to replace the parts or incidentals as, as they come that, that pop up, that, that's the way I understood it, stand it. But we do have a base level of the 217, I believe it is. And then we have, you know, the rental for the backup on there also.
Thank you.
What kind of timeline are we looking at here for this project?
Yeah, you're looking at four to six months. And if, you know, this is, you're reading this as emergency and it's an emergency.
Okay. It'll take four to six months to resolve it.
Yeah. So our plan is, is as soon as we sign the contract, which would be tomorrow, that we would work on getting that, the standby unit here so we can put it online while the other one's out. So that, that's the really critical part for, for me is, you know, they can, they can take as long as they want, as long as we have a unit here that we can use.
My understanding that as long as this is out, we have no, no backup for the electricity in the city.
I don't. We still have two feed points. And, you know, for example, a couple of weeks ago, I, I talked about, you know, there was an explosion on, on some unit up north. And we were able to switch, switch all this to the south feed, but not the south transformer. So there's a lot of built-in redundancy, but we are missing a key point of our redundancy right now. The, the answer to your question is, is we're, we are down to, you know, a single unit.
Okay. Thank you.
My question is probably more the newbie than anything else at this point. But we're actually approving the 326. Is that?
Yes. Yeah. So the standby unit costs $22,000 a month, the rent. So I, you know, I guess I do take, do care how long it takes them to get the other one back. But generally speaking, I just want that, the backup here right away.
Okay. So I just, I just wanted to make sure I understood what we're actually approving. And I know that's, that's a baseline number, but I just want to make sure. Okay.
Any other comments? Can I have a roll call?
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
This is the point in the meeting where anyone from the public that would like to address council is welcome to. I would just ask Amber, she can unmute everyone. If you don't have a comment, just put your, just mute yourself back on so we don't get feedback. But with that, if anyone has a public comment for council, now's the time.
Hey, Brian, this is Ron Detwiler. I have a question for Mark Hudson.
Go, go ahead.
Can you? Okay. Mark, I alluded to the fact that we're meeting next week as a Park Board, Terry Schaefer and Lance Willard. What do I have to worry about as far as the legal issue of sunshine laws and that? As far as that many Park Board meetings, members meeting at one time?
You're going to need to get notice, I think. To be safe, I'd give notice, actually have Scott put it in the morning journal. And what day is it you're planning on?
Well, we haven't decided yet, but Thursday. I can let Scott know.
Let me know like two more hours beforehand.
Yeah.
I can get it the day before, or at least 40 minutes.
My point, my point is, okay, my point is, we had a meeting last night and there were 28 people on that Zoom call. And it's hard to let everybody talk at the same time. So we listened and now we want to have more of a closed meeting with just the Park Board and city manager and park director and, and go through it. So I didn't want to get into any legal trouble, but if that works, then that, that'll work for us.
I think that based on the governor's executive order, at one point they were talking about approve, well, they did approve even teleconferencing. So there wasn't always the requirement that there be public input the way the governor's order came out. So I think the way you're, you know, that we've been conducting the Zoom meetings is definitely appropriate. In fact, I think it's further than what the order required. So I think if you give notice, allow the public to attend, but even if the public is muted so that the discussion is able to take place without, you know, feedback, well, without all the reverberation and things that can happen, I don't think that's a problem.
Okay. Well, my thinking is we had the feedback last night. And now it's time for the board to make some decisions of how to move forward.
When I'm talking about, when I mentioned feedback, it wasn't probably the right word. It was the idea of too many people trying to talk at one time and then you're getting verbal on the Zoom meeting. As I'm talking with my hands, sorry.
Okay. Okay. I, I get it. I'll work with Scott and we'll go forward with that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the public have any comments for council? Going once, twice? Okay. So are there any council comments this evening?
Just thank you, fellows and ladies, for your kind, kind comments to my wife.
Yeah, I, I think you probably can already know this, but you, you, you have a whole support group with, with us that has nothing to do with the rest of the city. But I think we, we've all grown very, very close. We don't always share the exact same opinions on things and don't need to, to, to care about each other. And so I, I, I think, I think you've got, I think you've got a good support system here.
We've got some hurdles to get over, but, and I appreciate all of what you're saying there because we feel the same about all of you.
You can, you can definitely count on a support system, no matter what you need.
Is there any other comments?
Going in a slightly different direction, I just want to say one, how much I appreciate how hard everyone's working as we go through this pandemic and some of the great ideas that are coming from all quarters of the city. But I also want to remind the public that we're all weighing it as we go through this. And just bear with us as we try to make this all work because it's, I've learned a lot in the last four months or six months of doing this job. And I don't think I was ever intended to learn it as quickly. So we're all trying to figure out as we go. And I think everyone's doing the best job as they can for our residents and for the greater community. So I just, you know, you guys, the, the people on this board and the Park Board and the planning commission and everybody else really, chamber tourism, we're all just trying to make this happen and keep it going as best we can for the city. And I want to say how much I appreciate all that hard work. And just remind the, the public, we don't know either. We're just trying to figure it out. So bear with us and we'll do the best we can.
Yep. But Dan, I do think it's good that you got thrown straight into it.
Sink or swim, baby.
It, it makes you appreciate it more.
I, you know, I didn't realize how hard this job could be. And I really, now that I've been on the other side of it and watched what you guys were doing until I got here. Yeah, it's, it's quite a challenge. And, and it's, it's still, it's an exciting thing to be part of to be able to help guide and make these decisions and make things work. So I appreciate especially some of the tutelage I've gotten from the members of this council as we've gone through this. So thank you all for that.
Any, any other comments? If not, I need a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.